Which is saying, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Burley. Madam Roehl, call, celebration, Secretary Roehl, please.
Yes, sir. Vice President Eppshar?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Punt?
Here.
Mr. Barris?
Here.
Mr. Barti?
Here.
Mr. Brain?
Here.
Mr. Burley?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Landry? Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Martinell?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Stelling?
Here.
Mr. Tremonti?
Here.
And President Gillery?
Here. Thank you, Madam Secretary. First of all, I'd like to welcome everyone back. It's good to see you all. Good to see everybody back. So. Item four, presentation of comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR, for the year ended December 31st, 2019. Ms. Buffkin, Ms. Buffkin, if you could state your name and department, please.
I'm Tammy Buffkin, Director of Finance. So we're pleased tonight to present-
I don't think you might go.
Okay, very good, okay. Tammy Buffkin, Director of Finance. We're pleased tonight to bring you our annual audit. It's the comprehensive annual financial statement for the year ending December 31st, 2019. Tonight, we have our auditor, Jason Gillery. He's with McElroy, Quirk, and Birch, and he will give the presentation of the audit.
Thank you, Ms. Buffkin. Mr. Gillery, you can state your name and place of business address.
My name is Jason Gillery with McElroy, Quirk, and Birch. Thank you for having me today, and good evening. I'm going to present the December 31st, 2019 audit to you guys, which I like to refer to as the good old days. But this, this obviously is a little bit of an unusual thing. Normally, we present the audit report in July, and due to COVID and Hurricane Laura, this has been pushed back till October the 23rd. So not really the most timely of information, but nevertheless, we want to provide you with the information that came out from the audit, so to help you guys govern the police jury as y'all see fit. It was a very difficult process, as everything has been in 2020, and I really want to thank Mrs. Tammy Buffkin and her entire finance staff for helping us get this ball across the goal line, because it was a long, long process. So tonight, I'm going to go over the, the reporting packet for the 2019 audit, which consists of two documents. The large one is the comprehensive annual financial report, also known as the CAFR, which is how I will refer to it, and then a smaller supplementary report, which we issue for on compliance with an internal control. So just to kind of walk you through, I won't go into a lot of details, but I would like to point out some of the key elements of the reporting package. And we will start with the, the CAFR, the large binder. The CAFR is divided into three sections. The first is the introductory section, the second is the financial section, and the third is the statistical section. In the introductory section, we have a couple of documents that I think you'll find relevant. First is the letter of transmittal, which is prepared by the administration of the police jury, and they provide some context about the local economy, about certain industries, so that readers that aren't familiar with Calcasieu Parish can pick up this report and kind of know what's going on, and have some context for the financial statements that follow. Another very important document which follows the letter, the, the letter of transmittal is the certificate of achievement and excellence in financial reporting. And this is the gold standard for financial reporting by governmental agencies. The police jury has received this certificate for 28 consecutive years, which is very, really remarkable. And this reporting package has also been submitted to the GFOA for consideration, and we would expect to receive it at 29th year next year. The next section is the financial statement section, or the financial section, excuse me. And the, the first page of the financial section, which is page one of the CAFR, is, is my submission to the, to the CAFR, and that is the independent auditor's report. We have issued an unmodified opinion, which means that we feel that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So this unmodified or clean opinion is, is what you would be looking for from your auditor. The, following the independent auditor's report is what is this, the management's discussion and analysis. And, you know, I, I realize that for someone who's not familiar with accounting and finance, that this is a very intimidating document, and, and doesn't make a lot of sense to most people. But if there's one, one part of the CAFR in which everyone should look at to get a feel for the finances of the police jury is management's discussion and analysis. This provides an executive summary and highlights of all of the financial information that's contained throughout the CAFR, all of the financial statements, all the notes. And it provides it more in a plain English sort of way. It provides charts, it provides graphs. So this small section of, of the CAFR really is a very valuable component, which can help a user of the financial statements. And then following the, the MDNA, you just have a plethora of finance, various financial statements, and the notes to the financial statements and supplementary information. And I won't go through all of those details, as we are dealing with December 31st, 2019 information in October. But the final section, which, which is somewhat interesting, is called the supplementary information, excuse me, it's called the statistical section. And this section is comprised of various tables and exhibits for both financial and non-financial information, and it's more of a trend study. So most of these tables are 10 years of data. So you're looking at revenue, you're looking at taxes, you're looking at debt, you're also looking at certain demographic information, and this usually gives you a, a nice context and trend for the last 10 years on various topics affecting the police jury. And so this can be useful information in your planning and, and governance. Next, I'll turn to the second element of the reporting package, which is our, what we refer to as our compliance report, or our single audit report. So this is a report in which we prepare, and we issue two specific reports that deal with the internal control and compliance of the police jury. The first is sort of a broader scope of the police, the police jury as a whole, and so we look at, how is the internal control of the entire government and compliance with laws, regulations, and contracts? And are there any findings that we need to bring about? And then the second report is more specific, and this, because it only deals with federal wards. This is what's called the single audit report. So we're looking at internal control over federal wards and non-compliance with major programs. So as you probably know, the police jury has about $17 million of federal expenditures each year. And so there's a formula which you go about determining, of that 17 million, what are the major programs that need to be tested in thoroughly in accordance with these governmental regulations? And those are called major programs. And so that second report really deals with what we found in looking at those major programs. And then we do provide a detailed schedule called the Schedule of Federal Awards, which details all of those federal expenditures in the, in the middle of this, this binder. And then finally, we do present the findings that are in the, with the report. All of our findings this year dealt with component units and not the primary government of the police jury. The findings have been, the management has responded to those findings, and they have provided acceptable corrective action plans in dealing with any of those findings, and they're all found in the body of this green report. And then finally, we just have some additional information that's required by certain debt issuances that require supplementary information to be put out there. And so that really completes the, the supplementary compliance report. And so both of these together provides is, is your total reporting package. And so that's really what I, the only thing I'll add is I just want to once again thank and commend the finance department for the work that they did. They really, they put this entire CAFR together under really arduous circumstances this year, and I really want to commend them in making this a whole lot easier for me to do my job. So I just want to thank them, and thank you guys for allowing us to do your audit for the police jury. And so if y'all have any questions, I'm, I'm open for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gillery? I need a motion to receive report. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? Any objection? That motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Gillery.
Thank you.
Item five, appearance by Ms. Elizabeth McLaughlin regarding the November 3rd, 2020 proposition to allow sports betting by the parish. Ms. McLaughlin, state your name and business address.
Elizabeth McLaughlin, 2200 Longview Drive in Lake Charles.
Thank you, ma'am.
First, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm here on behalf of the gaming industry to talk about the sports wagering proposition. But before I talk about that, I just want to mention that there are two other important ballot issues on the November 3rd ballot, which are the parish draining, drainage proposition, which I'm sure you are all very well informed about, and then also amendment number five, which is payment in lieu of taxes, which was sponsored by a member of our local delegation. Now, we've had a group of not only people in the gaming community, but in the tourism industry, business industry, other community leaders, and we've come together to support all three of these issues. So although I'm here on behalf of gaming, I would also ask that you support the other two issues. We are, look at this as a pro Calcasieu ballot. The chamber has supported and endorsed all three of these ballot initiatives, and has created a, a Facebook page called Calcasieu Forward, where we have information and educational materials about each of these three items, so that voters can be more informed about them. You've each been provided with an orange sheet that has details about each of these propositions on the ballot. So on to sports wagering. To talk about the proposition, first of all, it's on the ballot statewide, but it's a parish by parish approval. So only the parishes that have a majority of yes vote will be allowed to have this activity. The vote on November 3rd is really an opening of the door for sports wagering, because the legislature has yet to set a tax rate or set the regulatory framework for sports wagering. So until those things are done, we will not have active sports wagering in the state of Louisiana, but it is important that Calcasieu Parish pass this proposition in order to be able to have this in our four gaming properties. Why should people in Calcasieu Parish vote yes on the proposition? Well, I think there's two main reasons. It's going to generate more gaming tax revenue, and also, I think it's a critical piece to the long-term recovery for the gaming, hospitality, and tourism industry in Calcasieu Parish and in the state as well. And when I say the gaming, hospitality, and tourism industry, I'm not just talking about the big companies. I'm talking about the employees and their families, and then the small businesses across the state and in Calcasieu Parish that provide goods and services to, to this industry. So how much additional gaming tax revenue will this bring to our parish and to the state? And that is very difficult to say, because there's no tax rate that's been set yet. I'll say this, right now, we are getting no tax revenue for activity that's already taking place, either illegally online or in Mississippi and Arkansas where it is legalized. The Louisiana Economic Development commissioned a study in 2019 that the Spectrum Gaming Group estimated that we are losing about $330 million in gaming revenue to Mississippi and Arkansas. So we would capture quite a bit of additional rent, gaming revenue and gaming tax revenue, but to quantify it is difficult to say at this time. As a, as the parish jurors, I know that you're aware that, that the monies, the gaming tax revenue that's collected in the parish helps to support and improve our way of life here and improve our communities. The money goes to the parish, not only to the parish, but to all the municipalities within the parish, and it supports education at McNeese, Suella, and the, with the Calcasieu Parish School Board. So that $34 million, whether you walk into a casino or not, that gaming tax revenue impacts everyone in the parish and improves the quality of our lives. To the second reason, the critical piece of a long-term recovery for gaming, hospitality, and tourism. Those industries have been hit extremely hard, maybe harder than most industries as a result of COVID. But in addition, well, there are 989 tribal and commercial casinos within the United States, and it's unprecedented that all of them had to shut down in March due to the COVID crisis. But what is even more unprecedented, I would say, is the fact that our four properties in Calcasieu Parish had to shut down three times in 2020, for COVID, and for Laura, and for Delta. So these, you know, this is an industry that's suffering. By approving sports wagering, it's going to increase visitation to our area, it's going to increase visitation to our gaming properties, and that in turn increases rev, gaming revenue, gaming tax revenue. It helps to create and maintain the jobs in those industries. I'd like to also say that the gaming industry, you know, as hard as it's been hit, all of those four properties have really stepped up, especially after Hurricane Laura. They have provided hundreds of thousands of meals to not only employees, but to first responders and to people in the parish. They've provided hotel rooms to emergency responders, so to linemen and to employees. They've given money to the community foundation, to the United Way. They are part of the fabric of our community, and they're good community partners. So Calcasieu Parish is the number one gaming community in the state of Louisiana. The American Gaming Association, out of those 989 casinos in the country, the Lake Charles Market is ranked number 11. So, you know, we, we are a huge piece of the, the puzzle when it comes to gaming, not only in the state, but in the country. And so that's, for those two reasons, it's critical that we pass sports wagering in Calcasieu Parish, and I would ask that each of you support not only the sports wagering proposition, but also the other two initiatives that are part of the pro Calcasieu ballot on November 3rd. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to-
Yes, I have a few questions, Ms. McLaughlin.
Sure.
Mr. Andrew Punt?
Yes. On the sports wagering amendment, you said it's on the ballot statewide?
Correct.
All parishes?
All, it's on the ballot in all parishes, but it's a parish by parish approval. So Calcasieu Parish could approve it, and Allen Parish could not approve it. It's-
So theoretically, there could be sports wagering in every parish if it passes, correct?
That, it, it would open the door to that, but until the state sets up the regulatory framework and says where exactly sports wagering can take place, we, we don't know that. They could say that it's only going to take place in the 20 brick and mortar casinos and racinos, or they could open it up to, you know, other, other places where that can take place. That has not been determined.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other-
Mr. Barris?
Thank you. Thank you for your, your presentation.
Sure.
So although the regulatory framework hasn't been devised, what, I guess, I'm kind of dumb to this, this, this sports betting or sports wagering, what would that look like, say, at the four casino properties here?
Well, I know that at least one of the, well, I know that the, the four gaming properties that we have, sports wagering was, there was legislation in 2019 that did not pass, but all of those game, all of the four gaming properties had plans to build out a sports, kind of a sports bar area within their property. So there would be a specified area with like TVs, kind of a, you know, sports bar feel. So each of them would build out a space.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Markit.
Mr. Richard.
Mr. Richard, I'm sorry. Been a long time.
I, I was just wondering, on, on the, the places where sport betting can take place, is it going to be only at casinos, or will it be at Paulas or race drives and-
That will have to be determined by the legislature, most likely in 2021.
Thank you. You're back, Mr. Barris.
Mr. Smith? Okay, yes, ma'am. On the presentation, like, for the sports betting, will there be like additional job created from this?
Yes, it would be. To quantify that, I, I can't, I can't tell you a specific number, but it would, it would be in, in, an additional gaming space in the, in the casino property, so that would mean they would need additional jobs to service that area.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Elizabeth. I actually had a, I was just going to ask Mr. Beam a question before we moved on, if he would just kind of update us on the, the proposition for the drainage boards, update the jury, and then also for the public, because I'm, you know, a lot of people really probably hadn't had a chance to watch the news. I'm sure they've been busy with recovery.
Sorry, I'd be happy to do that, maybe, once y'all, if there's any other questions for Elizabeth, first.
Are there any other questions for Ms. McLaughlin? Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I don't need a, okay, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. To answer your question, Mr. Landry, just to clarify the information, which all is on our website, Facebook, et cetera, the two drainage, consolidated drainage district boards called, officially called these tax propositions, which we informally call replacement tax propositions. And, and the reason is, it's new, but it replaces the proposal, both one on the east side of the parish, one on the west, would propose a tax rate for that whole, those two areas to replace the existing seven district taxes in place. It follows many years of, of drainage improvements that you've overseen. This one is to make more efficient use of the resources for drainage. And these drainage districts, by the way, are over the, what we call drainage laterals, which means that's the street ditches that flow into drainage laterals, and those ultimately go to the rivers. So that's what they oversee. Alberto is actually the point man on this, and he's, he's good with better details. But basically, we, the, the thing we want to say is this is a, we've already seen, you have to remember that, yep, when I say y'all, the police jury actually in 2019 consolidated the districts already. It's just that voters have to approve any changes to taxes, and that's what this piece of the puzzle is. But in that one year, that, that's been underway, tremendous strides in improving not only just cost, but operations. And the, the boards have been really good. Y'all have appointed some good board members, the staffs work together, they all still keep the money separate right now, but that's what this would do, is kind of eliminate that last piece that makes it all, you know, align. I don't want to get too, you know, long-winded about it. If there's a particular question or something, I'd be glad to answer.
I was just going to point out, it is correct, every district, their tax rate will go down.
Yeah, it-
That doesn't happen very often.
No, it is a true statement that if these pass, these two propositions, it's only, you're only going to vote on one, depending on where you live, everybody's tax rate will decrease if this is approved. And we're not going to skimp, and the districts aren't on service, but it's, whether, how much it decreases depends on what district you're in. It's, you're simply taking, you're just putting in a new structure, replacing old one, and we recognize if you don't do that, it's going to be a little bit uneven for people. So the, the jury, I think, in its wisdom, and the drainage districts in their wisdom, realize we can make this work, or everybody pays something less. So, less taxes, better drainage.
Thank you. Mr. Barris, would you like for Mr. Alberto to come to the-
Or whoever wants to field this, I'll just ask him, then, y'all can flip a coin. What would you say to the opposition, to the rhetoric that's going around? You know, I, I don't, I don't know what it is on the east side, but I know on the west side, it's, you know, some of the things that, that, that people are claiming are going to happen or not happen if this, if this passes. I mean, if I, I can name a specific, you know, people talking about, they're not going to be covered, they're not going to have the coverage, you know, are, you know, are people's going to be over helping their people, and, you know, we're not going to have people to handle, you know, there's just a bunch of misinformation going around, and what would you say to that?
Thank you, Mr. Barris. It's, it's natural, I mean, some of these taxes have been in place, or these districts, since the 50s. There, there's going to be concern about changes. My answer would be, if you believe, the people believe, that our road system in this parish, unincorporated, is good, then you should vote for this. And what I mean is, back in the day, whatever you want to say, we had eight wards, when I, we still do, but I mean, they were actually wards that were legal determinants of money. And your road funding base, was based on eight wards. So you got haves and the have-nots. Nobody would go back to that. Police jury switched to the unit system, would centralize that, it spread all those monies in a very smart, objective, professional way across needs for roads. So if you live in Bell City, Hayes, or Starks, you're not going to get left behind because you don't live in Sulfur or Ward 3, Lake Charles. That's exactly what this drainage system right now is not. And so this proposal will mean it works the way government should work, where you use the resources, and you make sure you don't leave out those who, because you don't live in the right place. That's my answer.
Mrs. Bean, I think, Mr. Galan, I saw you raising, raising a hand, you, did you want to say something? Alberto? Did you want to say anything? Okay, I thought I saw you, okay. I, okay, yes, right, you still had it.
I think that's the best analogy that you could, that's the best way you could have put it, right there. I mean, I, I represent, and, and I'm sure the guys that represent the, the unincorporated area, unincorporated areas can, can tell you, the smallest, you know, most far removed road in my district is in the same condition as, you know, something that's, that's right there in the middle of the subdivisions and the stores and all that. So I think that is, that's spot on. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Barris. Any other questions, or anything? Just want to also say too, Madam Secretary, let the record show, Mr. Landry's here.
Yes, sir.
And the Police Jury Association definitely supports number five on the amendments in lieu of taxes. Item six, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Bean?
Mr. President, we have one application for liquor beer permit, and we recommend approval.
I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Eppshar. Is there any discussion? Any other objection? That motion's carried.
Move on to seven.
Item seven, consideration of approving payments of all current invoices. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Punt and a second by Mr. Burley. Any other discussion? Any objection? That motion carries. Item eight, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated August 6th, 2020. I have a motion by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Eppshar. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion carried. Item nine.
Move to adopt.
Consideration of adopting, of adopting process verbal and resolutions for authority to levy and collect a one and a half percent sales and use tax for a period of 10 years. I have a motion to adopt by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion carried.
Move on to you.
Item 10, consideration of adopting and ordering levying a one and a half sales and use tax as reference to the foregoing agenda item. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Eppshar. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion carried. Item 11, consideration of adopting- Motion to deny. Approving the, resolving, approving the following rezoning application, 800 Block of Manchester Road in Ward 8, rezoned from single-family residential to mixed residential, to allow residential developments on- to allow residential developments on lots one through 12 of Oak Run subdivision, single-family and manufactured homes. Okay, I got a motion by-
Mr. President, I, I'd like to recuse myself of this vote.
Okay, let the record show that Mr. Chalini. I have a motion by Mr. Smith to deny and a second by Mr. Markentail. Okay, and the first person is Robin Bassoni? Okay.
And Mr. President, Ms. Bassoni is here for the applicant.
Okay. Mrs. Bassoni, state your name and address for the record, and year for the applicant, right?
Robin Bassoni, 1010 Lakeland Drive, Lake Charles. I'm representing Oak Run LLC. I appreciate your service to the parish, and thank you for allowing us to be here. But I have heard from the applicant, the owner of Oak Run LLC, and he would like to request a deferral. He's indicated that he would like an opportunity to have further discussion with the representative of the homeowners of the, of the subdivision across the street.
Sam, what would-
Motion to defer?
You have a motion on the floor, Mr. President, I think. Go ahead, Sam.
Well, if, Mr. President, the, the applicant has asked for a deferral, that, that's completely up to you guys as the police jury, whether to defer it or not. Coming at the last minute to ask for a deferral, as the item's being presented, is, is a little unusual. But again, the, the decision to defer is completely up to the jury.
Mr. Ashar?
Is there someone here to speak on behalf of the homeowners?
Yes, there's several of them.
Yes, Mr. Ashar, there are actually three, uh, three people, I believe, here to speak in opposition. And there are other members who did not fill out blue cards, but also interested participants and witnesses to this, uh, this matter.
Point of order, Mr. President, we have a motion on the floor right now to deny. This is merely a request from the citizen. However, this was before, this is on board Tuesday night. But it, it would be up to this body to make that decision if we want to uphold the motion that's before us right now.
Well, I do think that we have to also listen to the ones who is against, if I'm right, Sam?
Well, and, Mr. President, if, if the jury is ready to proceed, Ms. Bassoni can certainly talk about the merits of the application, whether it, it should be rezoned or not. So far, I have not heard, I heard a motion to defer. I don't think there was a second, but I don't really know. But right now, the only motion for you is a motion to deny. Uh, so right now, that's what's gonna have to be discussed, unless there is a motion to defer.
Uh, Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, here's the thing, if they can work it out, if we force this to go through tonight, you know, we're gonna type that guy's property for a year, cause he can't come back down here and ask to change anything. I mean, I say you give them a chance to work it out. If they work it out good, if they don't, then we'll be here next month, and we'll decide. But why, why make the man type his property for 12 months? I understand it's the last minute, but, uh, maybe something's changed. We, we don't know all the details. But, I mean, I'm, I'm for giving them a chance to try to work it out.
So I think, Ms. Landry, you did make a motion to defer. If there is a second-
I did second it, uh-
Okay, so now there's a motion to defer and a second, so now we must take up a motion to defer. So you can ask for debate among the jurors, whether to defer the item or not.
Uh, could we take, I guess, a roll call to defer?
Well, first, if there's any discuss, any further discussion-
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Brain?
Thank you, Mr. Gary. I, I totally agree with Mr. Landry. Uh, I think, you know, I don't know what, what, uh, the reason is, but I think that, uh, a motion to defer so that they can continue the discussions for the project, or, like, like Mr. Landry said, we'll be back here in a month if it, if, uh, if they don't work it out. So I'll have to agree with, uh, with, uh, deferring it, if, if, if.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Mr. Barris?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Bassoni, please tell the, the applicant that's, that's a month. It's not 29 days and 23 hours. I mean, like, we move on this, this puts a bunch of people out. I mean, there's, there's people here, uh, this, this went down Tuesday. Did something happen like within the past hour?
I appreciate the opportunity, and I will convey the message. He is working in Houston, um, a job and was unable to be here. But I will convey the message.
It's 2000, tell them it's 2020, there's a bunch of neat ways to communicate.
I understand. I understand.
I know you're just a messenger, but that's, that's disrespectful.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Ashar?
Can we go ahead and hear from the representative of the homeowners as to whether or not they're even going to entertain?
Well, well, and right now, Ms. Ashar, the, the motion being debated is the motion to defer. So the, the discussion, if you do take further comments, would have to be limited to, right now, the motion to defer.
Believe, Mr. Ashar, I believe that deferral did not pass. Yes, you, you would wanna do that, but you have to, if you defer it, they're gonna have to come back either way. So that's the basis of that.
Yes, and Mr. Barris?
Does someone have to, whoever made the motion to deny, does that, does that motion have to be withdrawn?
No, the motion to defer takes precedence over the motion, the main motion.
All right, I think that's-
So right now, we're only debating the motion to defer, which I assume the motion to defer is to the, uh, next meeting or a month?
Third today.
There it is.
Mr. Markentail?
Yeah, I mean, we gave the applicant's representative an opportunity. But we have people that came downstairs, homeowners, and we're not, and I know we're gonna get some pushback from that. They didn't, they did not get an opportunity to speak, which may have changed somebody's mind on the first, or they will next month.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Bean?
It's unfortunate, and I believe your colleagues have expressed that that's why this was inappropriate to wait this long. However, the, it creates a problem if you do that, and then you, you can't have the applicant, I know it's, he created this, but he can't answer something that they may bring. It's just an awkward, incomplete situation. You sorta have to, you can't split the baby, is what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
When is our next meeting, which I know there, we may have a third hurricane, so that could be-
Depends on the hurricane, I guess.
What is your prediction of the next meeting day?
I'm sorry, um. You mean the 30 days from here?
Well, no, just if we, Sam suggested the next meeting, so.
November 5th is your next one. November 19th is, would be the 30-day, which is just before Thanksgiving.
I mean, you know, you can only beat a dead horse so long. We don't have to go a month. I'll just make the motion that's till the 5th. How about that? Maybe that makes some people happy.
Is there a second to make the motion until the 5th? Second, okay, Mrs. Steff.
So if there's no further discussion on the motion to defer, if there is no more discussion, there's no other need for comments, it's ready for a vote.
Two weeks?
Motion to defer till November the 5th, 2020. And we have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Steff. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? That motion has carried.
Thank you.
Okay, item 12, consideration of adopting and ordering approving the following rezoning application, 1179 North Perkins Ferry Road in Ward One, rezoned from light commercial to multifamily residential to allow residential development for duplexes. I have a motion- Second that motion. By Mr. Reshaw and a second by Mr. Markentail. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion has carried. Uh, consideration of adopting and ordering approving the following rezoning application, 800 block of Riviera Road-
Motion to deny.
Ward Four.
Second.
Resoned from agriculture to light industrial to allow light industrial development contractor shop and storage yard. I have a motion to deny by Mr. Tramati and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Is there any speakers on this particular, is the applicant here?
Yeah, Mr. President, the, I, I don't believe the applicant is here. The applicant did not show up on Tuesday night. Uh, I do wanna let you know there are two in opposition, but obviously, if the applicant doesn't come, then there's no need to hear from those speakers.
Okay. Any other objection? That motion carry? Item 14, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a cooperative vendor agreement for the continued services provided by the cooperative, cooperative extension service and the police jury continued financial su, support of those services. I have a motion by Mr. Ashar and a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion carry? Item 15, consideration of adopting resolution where applicable for each of the following items as requested by the Division of Engineering.
Move on 15, all bullets.
Okay, I'm gonna take them one at a time. 15-8, approving an amendment for the Professional Engineering Services Contract for the Newcomer Road Bridge Replacement Project. Item B, authorizing a re-submitting of an application to the State of Louisiana Office of Facility Planning and Control. Uh, the gravity, gravity sewer truck maintains and pumping stations for South Ward Three and South Ward Four Project. Item C, approving a construction material testing services contract for the Ham Reid Road Extension. Item D, accepting overlaying various roads, Ward One and Eight, as substantially complete. I have a motion by Mr. Ashar and a second by Mr. Burley on all bullets. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? That motion carry? Item 16, take them one at a time, uh, can we do all, no, one at a time, huh? All together?
Can you do it together?
Move on all bullets.
Second.
Consideration of adopting resolutions where applicable for each of the following items as requested by Human Services Department. Item A, approving the submission of an application sponsor agreement for the Family Day Care Home Food Program. Item B, approving a sub-grantee agreement for housing counseling service. Item C, approving the submission of a funding application for operations and capital assistance for the provision of transportation services to rural citizens. Item D, approving the submission of funding application for the 2021 Job Access and Revenue Commute Program. Item E, approving the submission and, of the Human Services Program Annual Public Housing Agency Plan for the fiscal year 2021. Item F, approving the submission of the Certification Package for the Workforce Development Board. Item G, acknowledging the submission of minutes from the Calvesu Parish Human Services Advisory Board meeting held in February 18th, 2020. Item H, approving the following items as requested by the local workforce development area. Item 1, the regional local combined workforce plans, which outlines operations and strategic activities of the LWZA Number 51 and the National Jurisdiction Agreement between the Sixth Parish CEO Consortium, Consortium for the services provided for a result of the funds allocated through the workforce to WIOA. I have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Landry and a second by-
It's right here.
Oh, Mr. Steff. Item 17.
We have to, we have to-
I'm sorry.
Take action, let's-
Any other, any other discussion? Any objection? That motion carry? Item 17.
Move on 17 and all bullets.
Take appropriate action on bids and proposals received by the parish personaging. 17-8, September 17th, 2020, ratifying the advertisement for, a request for the proposal of emergency assessments and environmental permitting for debris removal from Calvesu Parish drainage laterals. Item B, ratifying the replacement of two vehicles that was considered total during the damages sustained by Hurricane L.A. utilizing existing purchasing procedures. Item C, 7, September 17th, 2020, ratifying the receipt of qualification statements and award for the architectural service in response in, to Hurricane L.A. Item D, October 1st, 2020, proposals for professional counseling service for the Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Due to the grant timeline, the staff plans to prepare the majority of the hazard mitigation plan itself and request the permission to obtain requests for quotes for counseling services for part of the plan update. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Ashar. Is there any discussion? Any objection that motion have carried on all bullets? Item 18, consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Mrs. Mary Fondel Semien. I just wanna say, this, this, the Semien, the Fondel family have did a lot for the community, have been here a very long time. And, uh, just wanna send my condolences and everything out to the family. Oh, yeah, a motion on that, on, um, on that particular one? Uh, Mr. Barti? And a second by-
Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Lewis, okay. Uh, discussion, Mr. Barti?
Oh, no, sir, I was just making a motion.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, I have something to say about this Fondel.
Okay, all right, Mr. Smith?
Okay, yeah, uh, Miss Mariella Fondel, I mean, she was definitely, um, agile, uh, uh, definitely a rock for the community. I mean, anytime you needed to do something, or growing up, you know, she was always there. She was very active in every social activity that I know of. So, uh, from growing up, from, since I was a little kid to now, she would definitely be missed. So I know, um, the Fondel family, the Lewis family, the Semien family, they definitely missing a great, great person. And, um, I think heaven is, heaven is definitely gaining a worker, because she definitely worked a lot for the community and helped out a lot. We're definitely gonna miss her.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? Any objection that motion carry? Item 19, this is an advise, that Senator Ronnie Jones has reappointed Mr. Mark Senegal as a member to the Ward One Economic Development Board, as an advise item.
I'll, I'll second that, but I don't think we need a second, right?
That's correct.
Item 20, take appropriate action on the items of the following members of various boards, district. These are one at a time, right?
We definitely take A one at a time, yes, sir.
Okay. Item A, Calvesu Parish Planning and Zoning Board, Mr. Keith Dubrock. Move to reappoint, Mr. Dubrock. I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Keith Dubrock by Mr. Steff and a second by Mr. Landry. Is there any discussion? Any objection that motion carry? Item 2, A2.
Move to reappoint, Mr. Burndon and Mr. Brown.
Mr. Jake Porche. I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Jake Porche. By, I'm sorry, Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion carry? Item 3, Mr. Carl H. Vincent, move to reappoint, Mr. Carl H. Vincent, I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Tramati.
Oh, okay.
Item B, Ward One Fire Protection District Number One, move to reappoint Mr. Ernie Burton? Burton.
If I may, can we make that motion to reappoint from items B through H to save a little time?
Okay.
If you can read those, Mr. President, and take action on that.
Again, reappoint Mr. Ernie Burton and reappoint Mr. John Carone. Item C, Ward Four Fire Protection District Number Three.
Move on C to reappoint.
I have motion to reappoint Ms. Shane Boudreaux and reappoint Mr. James M. Gentry. Item D, Ward Seven Fire Protection District Number One, I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Jerry Nichols.
Move on D through H.
And we're gonna, motion to reappoint Mr. Guy Lynn Renshaw. Ward Eight Fire Protection District Number Two. Ward Eight Fire Protection District Number Two, reappoint Mr. Dwayne Chandler. Move to reappoint. Item F. Item, item F, Water Works District Number Two, Award One, reappoint Mr. Earl Carlton O'Quinn. Item G, Water Works District Number Four, Award Four, reappoint Mr. Jack Bolet. Item H, Water Works District Number Seven, Awards Four and Six, reappoint Mrs. Donna Gale. Item I, Water Works District Number Nine, Award Four.
Mr. President, we've, we've actually got a motion for B through H, so we take action on B through H, and then take I separately.
I have a motion from B, B through H.
I'll give you a motion on all of them.
Okay. For Mr. Barris. Okay, for Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Okay. Item I, Water Works District Number Nine, Award Four.
Move to appoint Mr. Kent Shambling.
I have a motion to appoint Mr. Kent Shambling. Motion by Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Tramani. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion have carried. Item K, no, I'm sorry, item I. Water Works District Number Eleven, Awards Four and Seven. Move, move to reappoint. Move to reappoint Mr. David Nizak. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, and a second by Mr. Markentail. Any other, any discussion? Any objection? Motion carry. Item K, West Calhoun Airport Managing Board. Move to appoint Mr. Joe, Mr. John Will. Move to appoint Mr. John Will, I have a motion by Mr. F, Mr. Barti, and a second by Mr. Ashar.
I did that wrong.
Okay, Mr. Barris, move by Mr. Barris, and a second by Andrew Pont. Okay. Second, motion by Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion carry. Item L. Move to appoint Workforce Stock rider. Stock rider. Move to appoint Mr. Boyd
Stock rider.
Stock rider. I have a motion by Mr. Smith, and a second by Mr. Stell. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion have carried. Item M, Venton Harbor and Terminal District. Mrs. Hillary Billard.
Move to submit names, second.
Move to submit names. I have a motion by Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion carry. December 2020, board advised items. This is some advised item, and number 22, just wanna recognize that early voting for November 3rd, 2020 election will be at, at the following, October 16th through 27th, excluding Sundays, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., at the Lake Charles Civic Center Exhibition Hall, Moss Bluff Public Library, Sulfur Law Enforcement Building. Number 23, take appropriate action on items related to Tropical Storm Marco, Hurricane Larr, Tropical Storm Beta, and Hurricane Delta in Calhoun Parish. This, this agenda item ratifies necessary actions taken on behalf of the police jury in response to the disaster recovery efforts during hurricanes Larr and Delta. To summarize these actions, establishing evacu, evacuations and curfews and approved contracts for emergency remediation services. Debris removal companies, emergency debris, stated sites and address, other necessary services for the parish. I had a, is that just an advised item? No, I had a, oh, sorry, I had a motion by Mr. Ashar, and a second by Mr. Brain. And I just wanna make sure, just wanna remind everybody that this is rest council month, just a sign of awareness, and wear your mask. And